I'm gonna call the Concord School Committee meeting to order and note that we are being recorded.
And I'll call the Concord-Karla Regional School Committee.
Thank you. So welcome. Apologies to any who usually follow us in the evening that this is a midday meeting, but it should be a very short one. We had to add an extra. We really just have one discussion item on our agenda here. Before we go into executive session, we're looking at a transportation subcommittee draft. So I think everybody's seen it. Dr. Hunter sent around the draft of the charge. And do you wanna kind of tee us up, Laurie?
I'm sorry, give me a minute.
Yeah, sorry.
Then back-to-back meetings on.
Yeah.
So premise, it's coming out of our conversation about the parking warrant article. And what I've been giving a thought, I thought it made sense, given we have other topics, transportation related, that we've been talking on, it made sense that we would put an umbrella on this subcommittee that allowed for those conversations as well, and whatever else might come up. So it's structured in the same way as our other subcommittees typically are, so we just paralleled that. I highlighted the review and discussion of both parking sustainability and also indicated the bus discussion, electrifying the bus fleet. And then I left the rest fairly broad, so that we could talk on other pieces, alternate transportation modes, recommendations back to the joint committee. And then I thought it was also important that this committee talk on the relations with the community at large, given the topics are highly of interest to the community, both the community at large and the leadership of town officials and town departments. And I towns really both, multiple. So.
Thoughts or questions on the charge as we now?
In the absence of a subcommittee, this umbrella under other umbrellas, we're doing a lot of this now, we're obligated to do a lot of this now. What are the ways this streamlines it, and what are the ways this adds another cog in the wheel that doesn't streamline this process of being informed? And I would say specifically, in the form of a question, does this get us closer to real-time data coming out of the schools about practices and problems regarding transportation at present? Because I know that's something we've been very desirous of. It's more contemporary information about what's happening now, what has occurred vis-à-vis problem solving with some of this, what has failed, what has succeeded, what's being modified? Because sooner or later, that's all gotta come to this committee anyway. So back to my, does this streamline, how does it streamline? Does it add any new, not streamlined factors into our deliberations and information sharing? People speculate on that?
I think it, personally, I think it helps to streamline in that we've been talking about doing some other work. I mean, specifically related to the parking warrant article. We talked about other work and comparing ideas, and like you said, comparing that to what's been done and what's worked and what hasn't. I think for us all to try to do that in this forum and at our meetings that are pretty full doesn't seem to work well, and that this will streamline that because a small group can go off, do that work, and bring back the information to this group.
Does that, however, just to challenge that a little bit for purposes of being comfortable with what's happening here, does that preempt the work that's being done by people who are expert in this area more than we ever will be expert in this area?
Would one of the charges of that group be to solicit those?
Yeah.
There's an information gathering. I think you made a very good point last meeting that, you know, I'll paraphrase incorrectly, I'm sure, but, you know, who pointed us to experts, right? And, you know, there's all these people out there that have probably forgotten more about it than we know, and their stakeholders like students who have the best interest in the outcome. That should be heard, right? So is that easier done in some subcommittee, I would agree with that, or is it?
Good. Actually, you know, I'm the one that actually last meeting advocated for committee as opposed to a subcommittee about this, and I can actually think about it. Again, Lori made a very good point about the fact that we are, mainly because we are stressed in time, that a subcommittee that can actually meet more frequently, and, you know, we know how much it costs.
Oh, yeah, a subcommittee won't be stressed for time at all.
So I think that, I think that it for speed. And on top of it, I think that the charge as it is now is not only to answer the immediate concern, but to actually start a regular chain of conversations for the stakeholder in order to, before town meeting and after town meeting, to solve other things. I actually think that it became very clear something that the whole community is interested in, be it the buses, be it other transportation solutions, stuff. So I actually think that creating a long-lasting, at least until it's covered, subcommittee is the right thing to do.
And I'll just add to that, I know the town's having the same conversation. So I think us having a structure in place already will be helpful as that discussion continues.
Oh, good. Great. Sorry, can we also make sure our microphones are on? I realize mine is not, and a few others are not. Sorry.
Don't think it matters.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just for the people.
Oh, right, okay. Oh, it's just for you. Oh, it's for mine then. For the deep audience here. Okay.
Can I, Cork, who are you, is there somebody specifically you're referring to when you talk about experts?
I think that in regard to the high school, we've probably got some administrators charged with some of the parking responsibility, know more about it. I think we've got a position funded by parking fees, and that might be an individual who might have expertise or knowledge to share. Laurie, I think, has already referenced the sync-up with town and their efforts that are already underway, so we can sort of cross-pollinate or at least inform each other. Those are a few that come along.
I don't know that that's a reason not to do a subcommittee. I would posit that, you know, most of what we do, they're experts in the system, probably know more than we do. And we gather information from them when we're making decisions. I'm curious about, is a sustainability committee?
Right.
For you, but it's not a subcommittee?
No, it's an advisory committee to me, of which one of you represents the committee.
Is there?
Who represents it, in most cases?
Cynthia's been coming in. That was part of your organizational discussion.
Do we, and I think in the, sort of, Cork's getting at, is there a way to utilize that group? In the purpose of this, and maybe add one or two more of us for right now?
That group's doing a much broader sustainability look. This is a piece of what they're working on and talking on with us. I would, I guess I just have a personal preference not to have this be their only topic because there's a lot of engagement there on curriculum, other environmental things like composting. It's a broader base.
And actually, I think that if we totally miss the whole idea of being nimble and quick and being able to work fast, and so 15 people are committing.
It's big, yes.
Yeah.
It's highly representative.
We're seeing the retract show by being smaller.
That says, this works, that can be a vehicle of this committee to get information in and updates and feedback and.
Well, I would also say that in the preparation for town meeting for the parking article, in addition to the things that we are doing, what come up with to do relative to actual parking, I think it would be good to highlight other things we do. I think we do these things internal to the system, and parents in a school that is affected by it know about it, we know about it, and people in the community don't. So they, whenever there's a conversation about sustainability in the community, we end up, you know, it's almost as if, well, we should ask the schools to do this too, because they don't know what we're doing.
Right. So the fourth goal, the fourth goal of four of that sustainability committee is the public relations work, which is where I'd like us to spend our time. We created a webpage off of the home, under my portion of the webpage. It's meant to be the collection site, and I did a really thorough update. And so that's all, you're totally correct, I guess, is my short response in a long way. Yeah.
And to that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm asking the timeframe, and you're talking about a standing committee kind of a thing?
I think, I didn't, I purposely didn't put that on here because I was unsure if you were really targeted at now till town meeting or if we really thought it was a broader, longer term. And you don't have to decide that today. You can start short-term and then.
I think we should decide it, because I think it clearly would have different, I mean, the membership could rotate.
Sure. So I left it open and it on. Okay.
And I actually, I think what I said before, definitely, my view is that it should be, at this stage, it should be a standing committee. It's just a big enough conversation in the community that we, between the buses, between the parking, between the water, between the roads, between other solutions, that I think that it would be an ongoing discussion with principals, with administration, with other stakeholders. I think that it will show that we're taking this seriously. Which kind of.
So I'll comment on that in a sec, just one quick question back to the interactions with the sustainability committee. It's probably given, but we wanna make sure that the two stay well synced up.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if we, you know, ask for official liaisons or ask for one of them to come to this. I mean, you'll be a link between the two of them, obviously, but do you want somebody else to also be a link so that it doesn't all ride on you to keep the two synced up?
I think that was.
I don't know if it's putting it out there. Okay.
Creative, I think we need to establish another way to communicate, but I don't know.
But isn't it just trivial that the, one of the people in our subcommittee will be the liaison of that committee?
Well, so you've already, you've already appointed Cynthia to the sustainability committee. That's.
So you can appoint her to the sustainability.
I was gonna say that.
It's a very simple solution. I will definitely make it.
Yeah, so yes, I'd like backup. I don't know what format it has to take, it gives you an answer. Okay, sounds good to me.
Do, if you have a subcommittee, it's a kind of a procedural question. If you have a subcommittee, is it by definition confined only to school committee members?
Yes, if we invite others, it becomes an advisory.
So we need to know what's those.
So do we want, which one do we want?
The bus, or the committee law?
Sorry.
Which do we want? We could have an advisory committee, and then we'd be free to, instead of all this liaison back and forth, to have somebody who's been doing sustainability. I mean, just have him or her part of the working group.
Part of this.
I think that we have something that we really want to move very quickly, and I think we have to have a subcommittee with open meeting laws, discussions.
But, you know, an open meeting law is not.
We can always dissolve, dissolve, is that what you're saying?
No, but I'm saying, if the stated, if a stated purpose of this group is to, you know, call best practices, why not be steered by an expert?
You can invite them to a subcommittee.
Yeah, I think you could, I think Cork's point's a good one. If we're gonna have something, you know, if this is gonna be about electrifying the bus fleet, I mean, that's a 10-year-plus project. So it would make some sense for the committee to have some people on the committee, and so roll through the subcommittee, who understand the issue, so that we aren't trying to educate the committee every time something comes up and there's three new members or, you know, it's, we just haven't talked about it for two years because it's been going along the way it was planned. I think it would be beneficial to have a standing committee, and an advisory committee usually is a specific, here's the task we're meant to do, and let's, here's the. Come back to us in a minute.
A subcommittee can suggest an advisory committee on a specific issue. But you have to have somebody to drive this whole thing.
And I think you'll find that there'll be plenty of people on this, at least on the buses issue, who would be more than happy to come and talk to you about one thing.
I think you'll have people at the tables, yes.
Yeah, I see this as, to me at least, I see this subcommittee as the three people who are going to run the process, but that you're not gonna have a meeting with only three people in the room. You're gonna have a lot of people in the room discussing ideas.
I think that the subcommittee is the nimblest, efficient way for the driver to change immediately.
It's a good question. Yeah, I think it's a good comparison to.
I have another procedural question. Because the way we've written this, it's two Concord and one Karla member, except we have a Concord School Committee and a Concord-Karla Regional School Committee. Oh, wait a minute. Do this all the time.
Do you need the draft?
I have the draft here. One for Karla, one for Concord. And it's both committees that are, it's a subcommittee of. I don't, I don't know that a Karla member can be a member of a Concord School Committee subcommittee.
Subcommittee, right.
This is the language we've used before.
Right.
So it's, yeah, I just.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a Concord issue.
No, the region. The main thing that we have now, like the urgency, is the region, without any doubt.
I'm not trying to exclude Karla, I'm just making sure we understand that.
Figuring out the wording of, right, right.
And to the point to you needing the ability to have an odd number of Concord members to be able to vote on a.
On a Concord basis.
Do you have to have an odd number?
Well, just if there were.
But there's a mix.
But then if you have three people, it's a thing, if you have three.
It really doesn't matter.
In order to have an odd number of people in the Concord Committee, you have to have three, and then you create a fourth core.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think, but I would challenge, no.
Everybody, all of us could be on a tier.
All right, okay.
But I would challenge the notion that you need an odd number. I think two is just as effective as three, because we just had this.
Actually, one is more effective.
Well, one is unilateral, that's not. But two, if you split one-one, you don't go forward. So you need to be lined up, and you'd be lined up if it was two-one. So I mean, I think, I think two is fine. And I guess my question is, you know, before we have this ending debate, do either of us have the bandwidth to add it on the subcommittee?
Well, procedurally, that's my concern. I think everybody's already overwhelmed.
I am, you know, unless I drop, if I drop policies.
Some of this work will go on without a formal committee or subcommittee? Definitely will go on. So I'm just concerned that this might be a tipping point. And for a process issue, because we really, I wanna move this along, it sounds like there's still more questions.
We can roll this to Tuesday night if you'd rather.
Yes, we've got a meeting in five days or five business days, or four business days.
Who's interested to sit on this committee? Who can? Not who's.
Who's interested?
Who can? Not who's interested. Who can sit on this, sorry?
I am interested in sitting on the committee.
Okay, good.
No, no.
We have a question, and Cynthia.
Who can sit on the committee?
Cynthia, are you saying you're not?
Well, it's, in my mind, it's gonna be daytime meetings, so I'm already taking time off work to go to daytime meetings, because the nights are just crazy full, you know.
And I actually, I have time, but in the crucial moments of now before town meeting, I'm gonna be away for at least two weeks. So.
I'd suggest, yes, everybody think about it, we're gonna come back.
Sounds like we need to just think about it.
I think we'd like to use time today for the other purposes.
That there is a crunch time, and the whole thing started in order to solve this thing before Christ. So I would urge us to establish it today, and to have currently three members that we take it at least until we solve our little impasse between all of us about bringing things to town committee. That's a two-months range. It's not, and then, and then we'll take it, if we can substitute the people on the committee. And, you know, Lori's been on so, I think it's not just because of rotation. He cannot sit on this forever, but he can definitely take it on, I think, now. And he'll more involved in sustainability than he is.
Same law.
And Dave.
Oh, yeah, great.
I tell him it's time to judge. You don't have to judge.
So we've got basically six of us coming in town.
I mean, what problem are we trying to solve? I get it, you know, in the big picture that we should be more sustainable, and certainly I was vocal about, you know, making some effort in that regard if we're gonna pursue pavement as one of the things. But I don't know, what are we gonna do? Like, what are we actually gonna do with it?
So, sorry.
No, no.
No, I think that we left the last meeting, the last regional meeting with some kind of an agreement that we want to bring it, we approve the whole article, but we want to bring it with a twist. We don't want to repeat precisely what happened last year. And I think that we, many of us feel that we want to try and convince the other three committee members that actually join and actually move the whole committee as a whole committee. And for this, we actually decided to create this workforce, task force, to actually move with some kind of.
Well, I would say the following. Whatever the vote was, we're done, voted. I mean, we all line up and we march ahead on supporting, we all agree to that. So I don't think convincing the others is really particularly relevant. We're all gonna support school committee resolution. There's a much, this is a long-play thing, and, I mean, if we're talking about a marketing campaign for the warrant article, we can do that. We don't really need a subcommittee to do that. We just need people propine on the way we present materials. If we really wanna make a meaningful impact, I think we should recommend to the next committee that that be one of the goals for the next school year. Where we are, crunch to town meeting, and then you, crunches are sooner than Karla's, right? And you change over the way.
Well, elections end of March. Can I just say, I'm a little confused now, because when we left the last meeting and we voted, I thought it, there was a general consensus of all of us that it, we passed the vote to include the warrant article and that we were going to support work in the meantime to look at, you know, various other options.
Have the solution so we can come and.
And so now, and now we're all saying I don't have time. Now, I, I kind of, let me just finish quickly, sorry. I had assumed that I would step back from this, really just because I've been involved in too much and I was gonna let other people do that. If we're to a point where we're saying, oh, we just don't have time to do this, then I'll just do it, I'll make it happen. But I feel like if we as a committee have said this is something that we should do, then we should do it.
Okay, I agree with, I agree, and I will take the time as well. I can remote participate in the subcommittee? I'm asking.
Okay.
So let me ask this, I mean.
No, I've got too much to do.
Well, he's got a, he's got a negotiation.
In your situation, I can.
He's asking, can he remotely?
I can remote.
Yeah, there's no votes.
Doesn't vote, so.
But does not, I mean.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's not.
Let me ask, let me ask a different question, you know, if I look at the things I. We have certain pressing needs, right? We had to get a budget passed that said we're done with that. He's got a contract negotiation that's gonna be very concerning. But like policy, like we just spent a lot of time on policy, which is great, but it's not really pressing. The policy will roll on year after year. If I take those two hours a month or whatever it takes and say this is more important and more urgent, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with it being urgent. We got this long, and this is maybe me learning how the region works, but we got this lots of stuff we have to do all the time. It just takes lots of time. I don't know how important it is. I may do it because, you know, we're doing.
We have suspended policy work in the past.
There happened last year.
Pressing things going on, I think this would be a perfect.
So I mean, the three of us right here, well, maybe not Cork, because he's in the negotiation committee, but, you know. I'll do it. I'd be happy to swap them out.
Where I go, where I am on this is not so much for or against a subcommittee per se, but rather more information and thereby more conviction about the need for the warrant article by virtue of more understanding here and more understanding in the community about the continuing severity of the problem, the continuing inadequacy of the solutions, and the information about what solutions we have tried or chosen not to try. We simply haven't had that dialogue here or with the larger community to provide the community with, in my opinion, the necessary conviction that this is another budget item they can put on their plate in 2020. Whether that happens, and you could say, okay, so this is all about political advocacy. I would say, no, it's not about political advocacy. It's rather about the shared information that gives us confidence that we know what we're doing with that warrant article. Call it political advocacy if you will, but I'm really coming at it more from being grounded in good information that's shared by everybody in this room, Laurie and Jared notably, as well as, of course, us, so that we can inform. And then the community can make the decision that it wishes to make. So that's where I'm coming down. If the committee gets us there, fine, but we've gotta get there one way or another.
Laurie, can I ask you, in terms of what you're hearing as a need to get there, is a subcommittee going to help you, or is it easier to just say, I'll collect this information and bring it back to you?
I think one of my thoughts on the subcommittee would allow that deeper dive that I hear you asking for. I had significant concerns about the time, the rest of the year, and we're gonna start planning this out next week for your agendas, is the pace is just going to pick up. So I thought it gave us the balance for the subcommittee to be the deeper dive, and then a summary of that come to the larger committee, the way we typically balance those. But the individual task of the subcommittee allowed for that group to have that. I don't know if that meets everybody's needs. That's the way I was envisioning it. I don't think you're going to have the time. You know, you spent two hours on this before, you're spending another good amount of time. You don't have that time for the rest of the year unless you wanna meet every other, every week or something that we haven't come up with yet. So it was completely a practical thing being on my part.
Right. If we decide not to have a subcommittee, we basically, I think what I'm hearing is, we have to accept the fact that we're not really discussing this much anymore because we don't have time at our regular school committee meetings. So if there is to-be discussion among some of us about parking options and other things that we're doing and everything, I think it needs a place to happen because the agendas from here for April are gonna be full at our regular meetings.
I have to treat.
And we do need to get to our executive session.
So we can just draw a poll just to see if people prepare to vote today, and then.
To vote to have?
Just to vote, yes.
To vote to be on it?
I am prepared to vote.
To vote to have it or specifically?
So you throw one motion, but you could split it.
Can I just throw one thing out here that we haven't talked about? Because there's two things going on here. One is prep for town meeting, which we've got, what, eight weeks? And that's really, we don't have eight weeks, because if we're prepping for town meeting, we've gotta have stuff to go out to the community with, which means we should have it now. But it'd be better just to get a working group of three people to focus on the, what are we gonna do prior to town meeting, which incorporates some ideas about alleviating parking besides building a parking lot, or in addition to building a parking lot. And then after the dust settles, which would be kind of late, late in, this committee's here, you see where the town has come on the transportation issue. You have a chance to sit down with a couple of the groups that are thinking about this issue. And then, you know, is it really what you're creating long-term? Is a bus, an electric bus committee, what's it gonna be? I mean, some of these transportation issues can filter through that. That way, that way you solve, because I think if you create a subcommittee right now with those two charges, you're not doing a long-term committee any good. So a working group, it's still an open meeting, be the same people, we don't have to have a subcommittee. A working group could invite some people to come in and talk to you. All you're gonna do is come back and propose something to the full committee. And I mean, I think within three weeks, there needs to be some sort of a presentation on the parking that. And, you know, one of the reasons, I mean, I think it's important for the people who are opposed to the parking and plan to work, because the committee agreed to move this forward, like David said, that you have a voice in this. Because I would go, I would go at it without, I just put it out there. That's, you know, you know my feeling. I've talked way too much about it. So I think in order to get this to a point where people are comfortable with it, I think the people who aren't comfortable with it need to have a voice.
Yeah, so I just wanna be sure you know that that's actively happening. I have a meeting this afternoon with one of the groups. I've invited myself to a whole bunch of the other ones. So this hasn't been dormant time where we're. We're working on, Court asked for some data that we're pulling together, Jared and I are brainstorming some sort of parking study. So there isn't nothing happening, I just want to assure you of that as we deliberate this. I am gonna suggest that you either vote or table it, so that we are here for the purpose we were hoping for, which was the executive session discussion.
Yes. So I think that, I think that there is a general agreement that we need to have something in place. I didn't know about the, how do you call it, working group? Yeah, it doesn't matter, I don't think that we, for me, whatever procedure we work should be, and if it's working group, it's easier, let's do it, but, yeah.
Okay, so is, generally, is there comfort in taking a vote on a short term, until town meeting kind of working group?
Yeah.
Yes, is it comfortable voting?
I think that's what, that's what we talked about.
Wait, is there a motion on the floor?
No, we just.
I make the motion that we table this until Tuesday.
Okay, you should.
Okay.
I would second it for discussion and just use the process.
How much stuff we get Tuesday?
Okay, I'll second that, and discussion, I don't think we should table it, I think we should take a vote on it short term.
That we table it.
Okay, will we have membership also put into that?
Sure.
Yeah, it's all, membership actually, I don't think we even have to vote.
It's short term.
Let's figure that out, we're not gonna get one, we're not gonna get.
We can, we can vote to create it and think about membership and establish that on Tuesday.
But we're a time committee, not a working group.
A working group.
We're back, okay, so.
Nothing we change between now and Tuesday, I, I, I don't believe, I don't believe.
Let's do this, can I have a vote on the motion for the region that's on the table, which is to table this discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to create a working group to consider the parking issues and prepare communications material to the community that will exist between now and town meeting on parking and transportation at the high school?
Seconds.
Any discussion? Discussion, are you deliberately avoiding any reference to membership, Wally?
I am, because a working, I think a working, I think we should, people should think about this between now and Tuesday.
Is there a presumption there, though, that it would be two or three people willing to dive in? Okay, thank you.
And we can, you know, people can think about that, you know, we don't even have to bring it up Tuesday. It just, let myself know, and we'll announce what that is, it's the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more discussion on a working group?
So it is, it is a motion, it is seconded, it is a vote.
And was the motion for both?
Yeah, the motion is a vote.
And the second for both?
You, did I second? Yes, I seconded it for both.
Cynthia did.
I thought Cynthia did.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven.
And for Concord, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Why don't we take a second to the membership?
Look, I would rather not be in, I was saying if I have to, I will. I think, I think everybody should think about it a little bit. Let Wally and myself know if you are, how about this, two tiers, interested and or willing. You know, you know, I'd like to versus I will if necessary.
I think considering, well, I think considering the fact that this is preparation for town meeting and something that was on the table for a long, long time, I think either you or Wally have to be part of it, you bring the most knowledge of the bringing to town.
Well, let me think about it.
Okay, that's a good point.
Get through the.
I'll consider, I will certainly consider doing it, it's sure.
Don't, don't, get up.
You got a vote?
We have to, yes, exactly, we need to.
I would, uh, entertain a motion for the Concord School Committee and Concord-Carla Regional School Committee to enter into the following. Executive session, Concord School Committee and Concord-Carla Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body.
So moved for both?
We're not returning it.
Is there no intention to return to open?
There's no intention to return.
You said that?
So.
You said it just now.
Well, I will, after we do it.
Oh, you do it after, after you make it part of the motion, okay.
So Court moved that for both?
Second for both.
You also did it for both?
All of you?
Aye.
Aye, and then all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, actually, we need to do a vote.
Vote call, sorry, yeah.
For the, for Concord, for Concord and, okay, just, let's do it for both.
You have a tie for both?
Ready for both?
I'm for Concord.
Moves for both?
About for both.
No doubt for me.
Constant for both. And please note that we will be not, we won't be returning to.
Public session.
Public session.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.